Right now, we don't have any internet here.
Okay.
I don't know what the issue is, so I'll just forward those to you if that's okay. I haven't even opened them to see what they were, so.
You got your car peeing, whatever we need, old school.
Where do you want to start from?
I guess, uh.
You want to talk?
Talk through the question, I did not print it.
I didn't, I didn't either. Can we borrow your copy of the question?
I think I've got.
Copy of the question initially, what some other challenges are. What's, what are some concerns that you have moved in or?
I think, I think, whether, whether, the first thing is orientation. Are we looking at a north-south or an east-west? I will say that the way that's, the, the field is pushed, we've, we've got it centered on, there's, there's a flat area out there that's, it's as level as what's out there now, and that's sort of where the center of the field is at, and then it drops off from there. So regardless, uh, from, from, from a placement standpoint, it would be better in a north-south orientation. Just because if we turn to east-west, we're, we're the great climb, and so we'll be cutting into the hill. But I will say that no matter where we're at, i- in the north-south orientation, we're still going to need the field. And I would, uh, the good thing about this is that you've got area around it. Then this, this, if this is the flat part of the site, as flat as it can be, and this grade starts climbing up, and you can go north and the grade still starts to climb up, you've got plenty of area to rob from to get earthwork material, as opposed to having to bring in more material from all sides somewhere, and have it tested, make sure it's suitable. We'll still have to do that here, but.
We might have to pay the whole income.
Yeah, so the hall bill, which can, uh, we've.
Depending on where, where you combine suitable material.
Whether it's mile away or else, you know, twelve miles away, so. Uh, that, and, and that fuel bill is pretty substantial, because you'll be, you'll be paying both ways, you'll be paying the full hall, full loaded, going one direction, and then, and, and empty on a return trip, so. That price differential turns into dollars per yard.
Yeah, and I hate to say this, but the male and female around here, and northeast, south, and west mean absolutely nothing to me. So is the existing field, is that?
It's east-west.
East-west, okay, and that's what this is.
This is north-south.
Oh, that's north-south, okay.
Um, the.
The field will be right over there.
The field's right here.
Yeah.
Right here, and it's where you did this one.
Here's the baseball field, it's running.
Alright, so the one we have now runs east and west.
Yes.
And so I am told, um, my son played football there, that it's brutal on the home team because of the sun. So this gets rid of it.
Somebody had asked us, and I don't remember who it was, I think it was Mike Hayes, if we could change the orientation of the field, if we did move to this new site compared to the existing site. So the existing field runs east-west, and the home bleachers are.
The rest of the.
They, they, yeah, they, they get all the sun, they get all the sun.
So right now, the home side is, uh, the west side.
It's great.
On the home field?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're. So what we've done is we've flipped home away, so the way is going to get the sun here, and home is going to go here.
Okay, right, right.
Now, also in August and September, it'll mean more than October and November.
Yeah, it's just for pretty good. You know, we've got placeholders like, like we talked about the other night, so we've got, um, this is where the, the gravel road starts, and we're going to improve it to, to meet the local public road standards, because it, it shows it's been a public road. Whether, whether we do it a four twenty-four, or else if we could do something less than that, twenty-two feet or so. Anyway, the new public, the new public road, uh, this is a placeholder, we've got to decide tonight on what functions go in this ticket booth.
And concession stand.
And concession stand. Uh, I think, right now, we've got one single building for visiting and homeroom locker. I got, I guess, the question to you, for you, is that what you want, or would you rather have visitors segregated, so that you don't have everybody trying to go through a single fence, uh, single gate and fence? Now, if you, if we decided to place, uh, visitor locker room over here, we could put parking for their buses, and where they bring the band, bring, uh, the team on two buses, band on the bus. They can be segregated from the home, and then that way, I don't know what the attitude is for, for, uh, for having fights or scuffling between, if it gets a little bit of heated, you know, having teams segregated at the beginning and have them at the end. You know, it's, it's, it's the same square footage, you're just logistically placing them to where they're, they're separate. We do have a large plaza area, because we know that there's going to be a lot of kids. We're not necessarily be setting them bleachers, they'll be out milling around with friends, throwing the ball around, whatnot.
Where do you enter the field, where, where do you pay to get in?
You would pay here, pay here, and that's a new concession stand.
Okay. So the plaza is inside the paint, I mean, that's the fence.
Yes, correct. This is the existing parking lot of the high school. On this side.
So we've got a paved pathway.
And so this, this is where they've got, you've got a flat spot on the top of that burn, and then it starts dropping off on this field right here.
So to kind of get back to the questions, and this is, this goes back to how many buildings we put on, and that's the existing. This concession stand, do we do one big one, that we can double face each way? You know, we can figure out a way, engineer a way to do it, where it could serve based all in softball and football? Do we want one big central concession stand?
Not up for the football games, something you mentioned in the past, that you basically have two different booster clubs that operate separate concessions stands.
The band, the band has the one, if you're looking at the existing field, the band has the one that's on the home side. And basketball does the little small thing on the visitor side.
So maybe we could replicate, replicate that is an option.
It is an option.
Well, this is like a little track or.
Yeah, I mean, it's like.
We were pulling out.
It's like a permanent, permanent building, right?
And if we do the two concession stands, we can do them in the same building, just separate counters and windows, that's.
We could even, if we, if we did a visitor's locker room over here, we could build the one for the basketball team and the visitors, you know, here, and put a small, small gang of bathrooms here, since we're already going to have plumbing over there, you know, for public bathrooms, as well as team bathrooms. Then we could do a, you know, this be the main concession stand with public bathrooms, maybe, you know, almost half the building would end up being a half to three quarters, between the bathrooms and the rest of the concessions, and tickets on the front, we could figure out a way to segregate that. And then the smaller, you know, home team over here, maybe we build a little bit bigger building, so you've got mower storage and all your equipment storage and all that kind of stuff. Keeping it all, and then we're keeping everything kind of on this side, and when I'm, you know, spreading anything out, we don't have.
So what's in this middle, what's, what's in this middle building?
That is the baseball and softball.
Equipment, mowers?
Well, no, it's a hitting cage, batting cage, and. Let's see, aggressive room.
Pitching, pitching.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That is a storage building.
Okay, so that's the mowers and.
Yes, whatnot, okay. This one, this one is divided, so this, this lower, this end down here is the dressing area for baseball. This end up here is, actually has a batting cage, and yeah, I think a pitching area in there, different places like that, for them.
So is that concessions there, condition of.
It is.
Okay, so really don't need concession access to baseball and softball, or would that be a good thing to have?
I think, my personal feelings is that it would be a good thing to have.
Okay.
Now, I, I've not been in the softball concession stand, I've been in the baseball concession stand, it's.
Could they?
Pretty common?
Yes.
That'd be a good way to.
Yeah.
Could they, uh, share one, do they need to have?
No.
It'd have to be separate, because the money goes.
Yeah.
Not together.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
But putting them together would be, yeah, not, not good.
But this is inside the plaza, the new.
Well, you don't, you don't actually cross the fence until you get past this point right here. So we could have access here, we can have access here, or access there for public, that will be outside the fence, per se. Do they, the main one, do they cook in there, or is it just, you know, hot dogs, popcorn?
I think they cook, right now, they do their cooking outside, except for maybe hot dogs. They just boil them inside, now, I, I'm not sure that that's right, but I know on the visitor's side, they cook all of their stuff outside.
Like a grill or whatever, you do on the.
They do on the home side, too, I know that's where they make the hamburgers, I, I'm not sure that the hot dogs, I would imagine they're.
They have to really cook outside.
Yeah, so. They have one of those things, things you pull behind the truck.
Sure.
So if we're going ahead, small concessions for the baseball and softball, how do we configure the restrooms? We need men's and women's, smaller version for, to serve.
Are there any restaurants here currently?
There are.
Okay. Are they adequate?
No.
There's four urinals in there, but only three of them work.
Okay.
Five thousand people.
Okay.
And they're talking about the baseball and softball, so.
Baseball is, uh, gosh, I get in here, but I don't know.
There's a couple, that's it, it's, I think, a urinal and a commode, I think.
There's nothing.
And I don't want back to one of them, so.
Okay.
Whatever it is, it's not good.
It's not good, that's correct.
It's compliment, won't be here tonight.
It's just not a, it's an old, it was great at the time, because originally, there was nothing there. There was nothing, it was two open fields, that was it. There was no fence, no, no base paths, no nothing on either one of them. And so they've been built over the years since the school was built, and the baseball field was built in the early eighties. This one was built probably in the mid-eighties, is that a bit about right? Because it was built that year, I don't think that it was there when I was playing. And of course, when they built the baseball field, they built the, the field house, I mean, the, you know, the concession stand, the restrooms, and all of that, and.
Is that the current softball field right there?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay.
Probably driving a lot of this is, are we going to actually provide locker rooms? Is that something that everybody feels like?
I think for football, we would have to.
Okay.
Because right now, if you're, if you're here, and the home team dresses on the far end of the, on the west end of the existing football stadium. The home team, or the visiting team dresses in the, the school.
The home school in general.
Yeah. So I, I think you would have to, but that's, well, in that case, it makes more sense to do a separate one here.
Do their team bus parking over here, play for about three spots.
Yeah, I mean, we sort of discussed that at, at the office this morning.
And then make this one a little bit smaller, but also good.
So that, that lines up with, with, you know, visitor locker room over here, with access to the plaza, and then bus parking here, and then getting the fence right, so you don't have outside entry to it.
Can I ask questions?
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not a member of the board or anything. I have been, people ask me about using the old football field for the track. And the track activities, track events, and removing it from this, because I, all the players I've talked to have said that if you put this track around the stadium, it takes the pants, pants out of the, out of picture altogether, because you've done so much.
Separation.
Separation from the football field to the stadium. And they've suggested, some people have to me, and, and to the board, I, I assume, use the old football field for the track and the track activities, and just concentrate your ear on football, and putting, uh, just a small bleacher at the old field and.
I think, I think that, uh, we had done some early on work that it came just to a quick conclusion that keeping the bleachers where they were, putting a track inside of it, we, we didn't have, we, we couldn't keep the, the football field a track.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about it, but.
I'm saying, just scraping it, starting all over again, but just a track.
Maybe just a track, put the football, have a new football field, like you've got here.
And this, this being the exist, the new football field. But the old, the old one, you would come and take, you'd take the bleachers away, leave the existing field, and put a track around. With like portable bleachers.
We, we looked at that, when we were at the old site, we looked at keeping the football activities there and adding a track. And with the location of the building and the property line and the.
The access.
Standards, there wasn't enough room to do that.
Roof, or just a track?
There was.
Oh, if you, if you take the bleachers out.
We've not, we've not looked at that.
Well, that's what he's saying, he takes the bleachers out.
For track activities, you don't need, you don't need bleachers for a hundred people.
No, but our, our focus at the time was something different, and so we were just looking, if we dropped the track, track there, I mean, one, twenty years ago, I did Redmond High School in Brentwood, and there, we have a multi-purpose field, track around it, and then big bleachers around it, and.
See, we, we, we had discussed, just some friends and, and.
Sure.
People here, to put the track, and then put the soccer field inside the track, and use that for soccer and for track, and then build a new football.
At the time we were on the existing site, we didn't look at that.
Okay, that's not saying that.
Okay, but the, the bleachers, we've got some people say that they would remove those concrete bleachers for fifty thousand dollars, if they need to.
Yeah, that's why we're.
Yeah.
Why we're invested.
Well, in, in benefit of.
Get rid of the bleachers, that's the whole purpose of this.
That's right, that's.
That's great. So a couple of benefits of that.
To go.
Because you've already got.
That's what I was thinking, for no green.
Already got a flat site here.
It's worth a grand.
You know, tear all that out, very little grading, if a track will fit, that's a pretty darned good use of this land.
Right now, uh, just coming to mind, helping me out here, is we've got some lights right here that would follow within the track footprint that we're going to deal with.
Some light?
Those, those light standards would follow within the track footprint.
Do you do track meets at night, or do they?
I think most of the time, they go.
Most of the time, they're doing the day, I mean, it's, uh, in the, in the spring, I mean, if you had a early ones, and you had several teams there, you might run into a situation where you might have to turn lights on. I've never been at one that had to turn the lights on.
I went to a track in high school with the.
I mean, I, when I was at York, we went to Harriman and Scott County and.
Did you ever even look at the other?
Barely, just barely, and we never, we never ran one that had to have the lights on.
So, so i- i- if that, if that became part of the project, that's, that's just something to kind of look at, is those, those two.
And they're the light standards are already in the track footprint of the track.
We need to look at where the existing light standards are, and look at the lighting requirements from T double S double A for the track activities, because the, I'm guessing that the lights that are there won't sufficiently light the apex, the, you know, the, the curbs, uh, without adding some light, so. I mean, we can do whatever we need to do, but if the track moves out to the old site, then you're probably looking at adding some lights.
Whereas if.
What you see, if we do it all here, you can, you can do the lighting in a thousand.
Twenty-five hundred and a thousand. You were, you said far away, so right here, your first seat, from here to the back of the technical area is eighty feet.
Eighty?
Eighty feet.
Eighty feet.
So what that is, you scoot all this forward, all that grading work we had to do is a whole lot, I mean.
Condensed.
Significantly smaller, you're pulling, you, you are, you're bringing the crowd back into it, and that is, that is a problem with the track outside the football.
How much, how much land do we have in the buy?
So this, I think the footprint right now, about, about fourteen acres roughly, but you'll want to get a little more than that to have, make sure that you've got expansion capabilities and.
Fourteen acres, that's including something that's always there, or is that, has it by that much?
Talking.
You got price?
No.
No.
I talked to him today, uh, he wants to give appraisal for it. If we get to that point, I'll, I'll, I'll talk with him.
Yeah, someone should, yeah, someone should.
We'll just broach it.
No, I mean.
Oh. Or just saving on it?
I mean, that could.
So I, so going back to your question about, if the track moved behind, behind the high school, all those events that we've got scattered here, you know, the long jump, and the, uh, the soccer, and the soccer in the boxes, you know, that, that can all transfer with it, the discus that we've got shown here, and the shot put, so you could have a nice, very nice, efficient layout.
What about the, the field itself, you figure?
Grass.
Grass.
Grass, grass.
What would be the difference between grass and, uh, dirt?
Turf.
Turf.
People are going away from, the trend now, I think, is going away from the turf, because it's hot.
It's hot, but it costs a lot of money, because of grass.
It, it does, but over time, it's about the same, your initial hits, you know, up here for the turf, but, you know, by the time you factor in that maintenance, you know, on your, your grass, it's.
It's been thirty, that one, thirty thousand last year, lots of things done.
It's about the same.
It's a lot.
I mean, cost half a lot, but our business.
So I, I used to work for an insurance firm that had a pretty significant sports architecture group, and so we did a lot of soccer fields, and all over the country, and, and they were, I was into that turf, and, but they were costing a million dollars a field, so I guess.
What's the life of one?
That's not true.
Ten, fifteen years.
That's.
Only fifteen years, I'll give you that.
There, there are some.
The carpet you have to change, but.
Well, I, I, I referee soccer on artificial turf, and anyone could get it.
All right.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got to change a shoe, if I do more than one game, yeah, change your shoe. There's, uh, actually some other districts that are talking about doing similar things, and that was one of the questions that was sent out to the list service of all the superintendents, and ones that had artificial surface that said it's about ten to twelve years, and you're replacing it again, so.
Can it be added?
Sure.
I guess it depends on how much they practice on it, too.
It depends on how much you use it, yes, yeah, sure.
Because what, what they've got now, the, the grass, that, if it's hot weather, they can't even practice it, like, it's tired up so bad.
Yeah, but we don't practice on that, we practice on that field.
And what, and one of that is the type of grass, you know, the drainage system underneath it, how do you take care of it?
I guess.
You know, there's a lot of factors that go into it.
Now, that's, that's been one of the problems at the existing site for years, well, ever since they built the field there, is the drainage. There is no drainage. And, uh, it just, that just water just sits.
Would you put a sprinkler in it?
If you, if you left, if you left the field there and added the track, it, is it existing, I would suggest doing something to address the drainage.
Yeah, I think we'd have to, yeah.
It's, uh, but it's always been a problem.
That crown, that crown's just not there.
It, it is better now than it's been in the past, it is a lot better now than it's been in the past, I mean, there were times on the, the home side, you'd be standing in mud, because there's nowhere for it to go, it runs off the field, but it's up against the stadium right there, and it sits, and, so.
Okay, so I think we've decided to split locker rooms, put some bathrooms in each one for the public and the teams, probably stick to the officials over here on the home side, that's typical of the, um. Answered the concession stand question, track, that's a very good one, because that's an expensive option here. And if we can, every, every foot we can cut out of this that we've got to move dirt around on, one, it's a lot less land you've got to buy. That's a third schedule down on here.
What is, what is it, Brian?
That's at least two acres to three acres that you don't have to buy, and by the time we squeeze it down this way, that's going to be more acreage that you don't have to buy, and you don't have to move the dirt. And the more we can keep it over here where it's dropping off so bad, it's, it's just a whole lot easier. It can have the potential to eliminate retaining walls that we might have to do, you know, deep foundations or whatever over here for the homes, just because these are taller and bigger. I mean, it, it has a significant ripple effect through the whole project that can make it work, seriously looking at it instead of, we just can't touch it.
Who owns this room? Do we own that room?
As shown as a public.
It's a counter.
It's a counter.
It's actually not state program.
It is now.
It's just kind of an extension.
Would, would there be desert, to play soccer here, if we've got the lights, soccer field will fit inside the football field?
Seems practical, because we got past the swamp.
I, I, that's what I've looked at a couple of times, I would, I would make this soccer field as well, and strip it for soccer, if you've got the lights, you've got the, you know, just the maintenance on the other field that you can run any, possibly.
Is that what is customary, you said you're a soccer room?
Yeah, it's customary, yes.
That would give them the area to practice and, and areas for their games.
Or better lights.
Better lights, better, well, let's just say there can be some contention in the soccer games there between home and visiting crowds.
No.
It never, it never happens. Yes, again, that is correct. It's, uh, it has been a somewhat of an issue in the past of not very nice things happening between home and visiting fans at soccer games.
Not the best, well, the yours field market, you gotta win five every game.
Now, that's, that was those older guys.
I believe they do, that's where they are.
We actually did have several.
There's a lot of conflict with the trail.
Which I never had, I think, then, why do you only fight with helmets?
Don't take your helmet off, or she's.
I mean, you're hitting a helmet.
Sure, I don't remember.
So, again, I'm sorry, do you know, is there a, a, a maintenance agreement, long-term maintenance agreement for the lights that exist in?
I think so.
Yes.
I think it is.
Those are on, those are on that, uh.
All of them on?
Investment charge.
Yes, the, the ones that, uh. That doesn't mean it can't be moved.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I don't know how long the contract was for, and I was trying to, I wanted to put the new lights up.
Well, we would recommend LEDs per year.
And they still service them?
Yep.
Yes.
They're bonded, because.
They're getting a lot less, um, maintenance on the pride.
What, what?
It's about the same efficiency maintenance.
And they don't do field lights anymore, of kind of. And they don't do field lights anymore, of course, it hasn't, so.
He's done a putting new lights here.
We wouldn't.
Yeah, he'd have to put new lights around this complex.
Okay, well, that takes that out of the question. And I think what, what we all talked about last week. What's the last week's? Is when we come back to the board with our cost estimates, is we come back with your base option. Okay, here's your football stadium with your bleachers, with your concession stand and lights, and then add the locker rooms. Add, add, add instead of, you know, let's, let's figure out a way to get this thing going.
Go with the biggest and then go backwards.
Yeah.
Got you.
I think that's.
Go with the least expensive and then go up.
Yes.
Yeah, I like that idea.
And maybe even beyond that, maybe a phasing that where if you, if you can secure funding in three to five years on, on big pieces that we couldn't do here.
Maybe it's the track over here is a phase two for the whole project, you know, we can kind of work all that into, you know, a phasing plan, or at least a, you know, how you're gonna pay for it, a plan typically drives the phasing plan.
The assessment you gave them before, was that the four point three million?
That was, that was the whole, the whole. It's, it's existing site.
Okay, but that's what y'all came up with, the four point three million?
Correct, correct, and that was only to do the bleachers, some ticketing and restrooms and a little bit of parking.
So, I'm wondering, yeah.
And concession stands.
Yeah.
Is what we have to do to play ball?
Yes.
Going up, I mean.
Correct.
Here you can play ball.
Yes, yes, fully serviced, fully serviced.
Play ball, but if you do this, 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 and this, you'd have a nicer complex, but first of all, we want to be able to play ball.
Have a bare bones, and then those elective items, a, as you can afford.
Yep. I think the football field, ticket booth, concession stand and bathrooms will be base, and then you add other things as we go.
We can show the locker rooms is, we're doing later, since you've got facilities, but practically, just the distance from there over to your locker room for visitors. It would be tough during typical halftime.
So, you want to book the field house something? Does anybody like the field house something, or, where does our team, where is the locker room?
Our, our team right now addresses in the field house, it's on the west end of the stadium.
Right, right, so I was thinking, boy, that's a lot, oh, I have them there.
Yeah, that, that would be, that would be difficult.
Yeah, that must burn.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you could bust your team over there and make the.
Make them wall up through there. Well, that eel, he goes around this way. Oh, there's a big hole down there, mm, it's a huge hole, there's actually a pond there now, in there.
Yeah.
So we're talking about moving the entire stadium from where it is to a new location.
Correct.
Which could be stands, a football field, concession stands, dressing rooms, and the fact, you gotta get a price of the property before you can do anything, though, right?
Well, and what we need to do is take this track off, see if it'll fit over here, squeeze everything down.
Get more concuss.
And then relook at how much property you need, because it's not fourteen acres, it's gonna be somewhere less than ten, yeah.
Cause the total project cost is not just the cost of construction, it's the cost of back-conditioning the property.
Yeah, now, the board approved four point three million dollars, I believe.
That's correct.
Uh, so are you gonna have to work within that four point three million dollars?
Trouble.
Might be awesome.
That's the last state approved additional five million.
We heard what the fan said about the fun balance today.
We did.
You know, we's only, I don't have any counties that make, no, they've only two systems that pump balance in the office. Us, one, I don't believe that a fun balance. Us, one more has. What that guy said, he said there can't be in that predicament. Especially when we can't buy money. Do I make your agent, do I let keep that same budget?
Uh, similar.
I think, I, honestly, I think it's gonna require things, if you want a track, I think the track's gonna have to come later, and it'll come over here.
But at least you know where it'll reconvene, how things will lay out.
Yeah, you'll have a plan.
Just a, a little question, um, about how much does a track cost, a regulation sized track?
About a million bucks.
A chameleon bucks?
A chameleon.
Half a million?
B U N.
What?
And that depends on how you surface it, and how much.
You have to do, I mean, it's.
How much?
I'm just trying to check.
Did you write a check?
You know, a million?
That's what I'm saying, that, that took up slightly over, you know, one, one, one high size.
You got, you, you, you're right, one, just don't know, don't know you're gonna be good, right?
They lie.
But also with that, I mean, the, the, the calic burden is that rubber surface.
Yep.
And, and I mean, they're nice, they're great, I mean, that's what we put in, in Wavens County, but they're, they're simpler, you know, the, but they also have a life, and, and there's a replacement cost. At that life size.
Just like a roof or a school or.
In its way, you stay out of it.
I forget, yeah.
He did.
But you can make a nice asphalt track, and an asphalt track is gonna require a little bit less, yeah. A little specialty.
And, and it, it is especially contracted, that puts on rubber tracks.
When the board approved the four point three million, we were down to real specific costs at that time, it was a rough estimate.
Just generalized assumptions.
So this is a possibility, or it may not be. Cause this is gonna be more expensive.
Sure.
But you gotta build a football field, the other one ought to have a football field, plus you gotta buy land, couldn't I?
But you gotta look at, what's that worth to you to have a, a better facility?
Well, sure.
And the more, you've got more flexibility over time, too.
So if it, if this ends up being four point five million, is that a good deal? I don't know, if it's six point five million, is that a good deal?
But also look at the, look at the users of the facility, is it just a football team, or else are you satisfying some other needs, if you put a soccer field here as, as well, I mean, you've got, as, as Don like to reference to, you can affect a lot of cross-sections of the entire athletic department. And so the, the end users, it's not just a single, single entity.
Right. And especially if the public has access to, to, to.
And realistically, I think public access in this track would be better than public access.
Oh, yeah.
I agree.
Really don't want it public here.
No, 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 I agree with that, this makes more sense.
And the people are, that's, they're pushing toward giving the track, cause the practice now, that discus that's back in the parking lot, a little bit, we don't have any, any place for the track and field.
And every need is a way, you can't have one.
You can't have it a year, and, and they remind me, every time I mention it, somebody, well, we spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a tennis court, that very few people play tennis, and, you know, what about the rest of our kids? Everybody can't put football and basketball.
You know, I, I, I don't know if there's a chance, in, in our industry, we talked about public-private partnerships, you know, is there an opportunity to get some funding from the local community, maybe? Can the city, can the city give you fifty thousand dollars a year, can the county match that, and that goes towards something that the public can, can, can get use out of, so. Uh, we talked about that, talked about synthetic turf, how the town of Huntington, on West Tennessee, you know, the community bought that field, not the school bought it, so.
So, you gonna come back in two days and break the price back, which?
I think that's more or less.
More.
Right, right.
By the next meeting. What I did like, and I'm just a, a citizen, I didn't like putting the four point three million dollar price in the paper, and let the contractors that's gonna bid on this see, you know, what, is that a standard thing that you do, or?
It's public information.
I think, I think you'll find that there's, there, there's a big disparity between bid day price and things reported in the news media.
Cause I've looked at, at, well, on the internet, things, that's some, what some schools have spent, like, there's one school in Alabama, built a forty-five hundred, like, forty, yeah, forty-five hundred seat facility for three point eight million. Locker rooms and concession stands, and, now, if they, I don't know about the land, they didn't mention the land, if they had about a land.
The, the, right now, in Mill, Tennessee, and I'm sure it's everywhere in this area, the, the, the bidding market is very fluid, and so.
The cost is gonna be what the cost is gonna be, when we get finished with the construction documents, we're gonna have a stack of drawings about this thick, and an eight and a half by eleven booklet that's three inches thick. That's gonna have all the information that the contractors are gonna bid on, they're not gonna bid on what they read in the newspaper a year and a half ago.
Just to give them.
They're gonna use that price to go buy, and if you take, tell the schools, prove four point three.
But that, but that's not a good business decision for them to do that.
Yeah.
We'll know whether they're.
Would you?
Yeah.
If you got one more bid, you have a fair fight for it anyway.
Yeah, and just to give you an idea, I pulled a project we did back in two thousand twelve, only bleacher repla, it was only bleacher replacement, they had all the field and all the track, and this had fencing and all that stuff in it. It's almost, it's three thousand seats. And it was one point two million dollars to buy and install.
Metal.
The metal bleachers, yeah, it's the same company that we looked at for providing.
Seven year ago?
Yeah.
Think they're.
But the number I got for, for limited number for this is about the same, so it really hasn't changed.
Not, not for Fulton?
Not for Fulton?
Yes, yeah.
Fulton.
That's a nice facility, man.
Have you been there?
Yeah. We used to, we used to get to the, like.
When you go there, you do see the distance between the football field and the, and the stadium, it's like hollering across the field to, to move your team.
And, I mean, of course, we worked on this for two years, and every year it's gonna go up.
Eight lanes. They get started, don't they?
Yeah.
And one, one of yours is six.
What was it, they said that building they built down the other day, it was built, they, they was gonna build a building in two thousand and twelve, and they built it five years, it was seven more million dollars a school.
I might have been in the back.
You remember that office?
I'm not sure what the number is.
In six, in six or seven years, it was that much different.
Million dollar view.
Said we went ahead and built it, and we didn't have much money in it.
Oh, that's a little, well, it's certainly not gonna get cheaper, it's certainly not gonna get cheaper.
That was the thing, it's.
It's not gonna get cheap. Material prices are about the same, what's driving the market is labor, they can't find it, can't.
And they're having to bring those workers, those skilled workers in.
From anywhere.
You gotta house them, give them allowance for a living.
And land, I mean, it's been more land, how about this building, five, six, seven years, it really makes a big difference, yeah.
So, that's, uh.
What is the?
It's coming in.
Second February, uh.
Versus, oh, sorry, Greg. I don't know. I think that.
We got the opportunity to do something right, but I love it.
You don't, you don't have enough money together, but they do it eleven dollars.
And that's gonna be about a whole lot more people.
All the little kids.
If we, if we can get a base plan put together, figure nerves work, it's gonna be the worst part. Let's start to do some, uh, great, I forgot what the greatest comes from.
It would be nice, we could have it about five, seven days for our regular meeting.
I think we, it won't be too much guesswork, we'll need every day, other, unless we go to the March meeting.
That'd be fine, it would happen this year anyway.
Uh, that, that will give us a time to give you a better product.
We can start on it.
We can play on it this year.
No.
That's what I'm saying, so.
If we're here, we can start the work any ti, anytime, if you're on the old stadium, then you're waiting till November of next year.
If you go to the new one, you can go ahead and play on the old field.
That's probably true, yeah.
Any, any phasing that we do on the existing field, maintaining football there. It, it makes the construction a whole lot more challenging because of the phasing and start, you know, you got hard start and stop time.
Beauty of this is you, you get this done, football team plays over there, and we get to do whatever we wanna do on the.
So when, when you talk about coming back, you know, your, your March meeting is on March the tenth, that gives us six or seven weeks to get design done, get graded done, and get some pricing. And also some phasing, and what that cost might look like with that phasing.
Yeah.
You know, February, that gives us three weeks.
If we come in the March meeting, we can, we got access to pricing guides and whatnot, but if we, if we come at the March meeting, we can do our work and actually send it to some contractors. As we know, and give them three or four days, say, hey, can you give us some sanity check, tell us what you're thinking here, and have a little more confidence in it, I know.
Once we decide what we're gonna do, can you all send your structural engineer back up to look at the stadium over there and make sure that.
Just to follow.
Yeah.
Doesn't change much.
Just put everybody at ease, you know, that it's, it's okay to be on that stadium and things like that for another year, you know, at least.
Cause you're gonna be there at least one more year.
Yes, sir. Regardless.
Well, you've got, have you got an agreement with Dr. Mason about, he'll sell us this land?
He will sell the land, now.
Price.
Well, what is, what is on the cost, is the, is the thing, you know, I don't know the exact answer to that, yeah. He's, he's willing to sell the land, talked to him right before I came in here, I was on the phone with him when I pulled in the parking lot, so, so, really, for, for.
Yeah, you can't buy nothing, I mean, especially you start down on one eleven, but through there, right in the center, and click there, it's twenty thousand dollars next.
From, from there to the fucking county line, you can't buy, right?
You can't buy, some of it's thirty thousand.
That's one place on my highway.
Yeah, but luckily, that's another dimension.
I've got to see if the acres out there.
Pay that for it, I'm selling it for that.
This is behind building, you know, it is.
I don't care, I'm just, I'm pricing how it might, how it weighs, I should have the land higher.
Yeah.
Well, if I was gonna do that, I'd go down on one eleven and buy that land, before I'd go there and buy that land. Me, now, just paying me off, no.
So, are, are we right, the March meeting is March the tenth?
Land five.
Right.
I think that's correct.
Now, something like that, if we're, if we're, we can give you sometimes summary, you know, a few days prior to, after we.
That'll be good.
At least I could have less than ten acres, is that not what you said?
Well, ten acres or about.
Let, let us get some grading, some, some grading done, but that's, that's gonna determine our footprint.
A, a, anyway, it's gonna be less who want this, yes, significantly, so.
How many acres does that go on for?
I mean, I don't know what.
Base, fact base.
Five hundred, nine hundred.
Some thousand per two.
I don't know, I mean, I don't, what do you, I, sorry, my land is.
I'd estimate that would be sort of around twenty-two acres.
I live a mile.
Been here.
Two tents, I'll roll that one, except by, you can get it.
Dr. Winham.
Easy, right now.
Where you're at. The, uh, parking along the road here is.
Is there a?
Yeah. If you're looking at more than that, you.
This is, this is about how much, we, we talked about roofing spaces, but this is not bad, I haven't counted, it's not.
Where is your parking gonna be here?
Well, you've got, you have.
Parking lot, yeah.
And then the access walkway right through here between the baseball and the softball field, and, and then this will be like handicap, uh, emergency vehicles, I'm assuming.
Maybe some coaches or something, or.
No, no, we're gonna make the coaches park down there.
Whoever.
Still more school.
Sports runner.
No.
They actually be clubs, it'll be an easier walk, two big hubs.
Sport rider, what are you doing?
Well, let them walk through it, he walks up, he walks up.
He won't.
Press pass.
They did that for me in Clemson in South Carolina, maybe.
You want one right up here?
No, I like to walk a loop.
Oh.
It looks, it's raining, he wants.
Golf cart.
Golf cart. He goes, he's a doggy or something.
Clemson.
They have an elevator in the field where my daughter works. They got an elevator.
You don't see that much, I'll be.
Because it's got a upper, lower part.
I will say, whatever.
I guess they had to put that.
This is just my personal opinion.
I guess they had to put.
Whatever the cost is here, you've got an opportunity to do something that's light years.
I mean, I think you're gonna get the access down here.
I think, I think if you do, the, the good.
Well, turns it into a long time use.
Yeah.
Yeah, the two combined changes the. I don't know, the environment, the perception and.
You should do like the procedures and the parties, just increase it, in, in, increase it, negate the.
Yeah.
If people, if people would pay that, you might be all right doing that.
They'll compete the sales.
Yeah.
That's all easy. Maybe we put the, maybe we put the right name on there, we could get a corporate sponsor and, you know.
I thought, do you, the office style?
Field.
Field.
That work. There you go, Doc. There'll be your legacy.
People, people want to run baseball, office.
Mason chose the right price, we'd be calling Mason's big.
That's right. What, what's the cost of it, is it six, seven dollars to buy a ticket?
Six dollars, I think, now.
I don't think they're gonna make seven now, this.
It costs me two dollars.
How much?
That's how they're paying for the field.
Yeah, well, how does it pay for the field?
Correct.
Part of the questions that we had.
Well, I've answered all of mine. Of course, it seems that we need these meetings, we got all the work to do.
Well, yeah.
No, I think that's a very good point about doing the track.
Oh, yeah, I think, so how about let's do this, let, let us get a turn and get the site plan generated and maybe even at the other football field, I've got some survey there.
Okay.
And so we can drop, drop this track on that survey that we've got for down there. And then we can, give us a few days and then we can shoot you what both of those look like. You know, the stadium removed, uh, that track sitting down there in some orientation with these sports stations. Tell us this, so if this were a reality, what field events do we need to make provision for?
We got a list there.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, well, this is just the, uh, the team members.
Your, uh, long jump, high jump.
And the benches.
I know, more, anyone that does pole vault. Yeah, I, I don't know if anybody that does pole vault anymore around here, now, there, there are some, but I don't know of any around here.
This is like it's ninety percent track.
Um, but your high jump, your long jump, your triple jump, uh, run, it will track the, um, or.
The other guy.
Yeah, your discus and your shai.
We've got that accounted for.
Those are all of your, uh, events that would be outside of, of your normal track, that's a track, track.
And, and really, the bleachers, like, you, you like something like a soccer field, people.
Yeah, we'd do something small.
And people are watching, uh, they're walking to that event and.
Standing. And we still might be able to use the old football field for the, like, the mill school.
That's what I fixed, that's cleaning the old football field.
I know, that's, that's what we, that's what we don't know, cause people don't have that track, you know?
We lose out.
Like, like that, you may lose four corners of it, or maybe, you know, the last ten yard, it just, how it fits. And you might get lucky, you might fit just in the perfect, right, it might fit right, and.
If, um, I'm assuming you don't wanna move the existing lighting standards, like poles.
That's just something we'd have to look at.
I, I mean, I.
Check on the contract.
Uh, whatever, yeah. You could do something smaller than an eight lane track, I wouldn't recommend it, so even, I would put, if we put the track over to existing. I would put eight lanes there and if that means moving the lights to a new location.
We're taking them out.
Move the lights to a new location.
That's just project cost.
Yeah. There's seven schools in our district, so if all of them participate, we'd have at least one runner at each, each event. Do all the other schools have?
Not all of them, there's some that don't, but, um, like you would, what you would do is you'd, you'd probably, for here, you'd probably invite Coopel, White County, York, Macon County. Um, I think who else?
Smith County.
Um, does Smith County have a track team, okay, Smith County?
Clay and Fintridge.
Clay doesn't, um, Fintridge, does not, the York does, Picking County does not, um. That's probably, probably, I don't know either.
I don't think they do.
Now, they've got a track around their football practice field down there, but I don't know if they have track team.
I don't ever say that.
I've seen kids running and running, you know, around, and I take my granddaughter to soccer practice and she's always.
Who talking about York?
I can buy that, I don't, I don't.
Who would, who would we need to talk to about those lights, would they?
That'd be upcoming, U C N system, upcoming electric.
I wonder if they would let our contractor move it as part of the project or would, is that something that they would have to do themselves, so?
Right, you know, they.
Do you know who we'd need to talk to over there?
Yeah, Murray Johnson.
Murray Johnson.
Murray?
Murray, Murray Johnson.
You don't know his phone number, do you?
I'm not certain.
He, he worked every year at the R and L.
He never would go, heck, did he, didn't he, know where he was?
Nine three one, two six one, five two zero three.
That's Murray, that's Murray.
He crossed himself off.
Is that office, is that Coopel that we?
Ladies, ladies actually work out of Coopel office.
Did you have any other issue or concerns?
Yeah. See, that's what you run into with a lot of teams, is they don't have like field events, like they won't have, uh, long jump, triple jump, shot put, discus, things like that. They, there's just a lot of teams that don't have. Some teams don't have, they run hurdles, you know? That's, that's a pretty unique skill, run hurdles.
Yeah, I, I, I went to the ninety six Olympics in Atlanta on Saturday and watched some of the track events. Most exciting sporting event I've ever been to in my life, absolutely.
So, maybe let's target the end of next week or first, next week. Let's read the first week and, and get those concepts to you guys, for y'all. More or less a cell phone and then we can do some detail, do some, do some detail grading and whatnot. Is that reasonable?
That's good.
Okay.
Maybe he could be straight up, he does always help.
He got any mind? I hope, I hope he hires us too.
I, I don't use bat shape, I don't.
Tell me if they had any on.
He was a power miller. He's bat shaped.
Yeah, he didn't look good that night.
He did, correct.
Y'all be back March eighth or when?
Or we'll have. Things for y'all to look at then.
There's your lines. Could you try to do something like that?
Um, we just gotta put on a.
We just gotta, we, we.
Possibly.
Possibly, but if, if. For junior pro or. Strike won't be right for.
Um, I think he's wanting to wait till he gets a little closer to making some kind of decision, you know?
Right, he'd have to adjust the heads, but. But also the grade for the field wouldn't be right, he wouldn't be able to keep the field for the middle school.
Kind of like D J World.
Well, see.
So, D J World, try to kill it down there, just. Existing field intact, not changing how we're getting the crown of it.
And the only thing. Oh, yeah, see, he tried to keep that secret.
We don't put that for long.
It didn't work.
But when you turn the bleachers out.
Train.
You gotta have something sort of a track, can the lights be on the inside of the track?
We just gotta lay it out and see.
If, 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 if it, if it's something that we would, I just.
We just gotta, don't know without.
No, I've seen baseball fields like that before.
Yeah, there's a whole one.
At Carthage, that's the way theirs was, back years and years ago, Monterey's was that way.
Monterey's was really.
Sure was. Smith County's was bad, but on river, you know? Lord, it's all, Leo Field's about one fifty and Wright Field's.
Thirty, forty.
Don't ever end. Yeah. The old fairgrounds, you played up there, there was no fence.
They've been up twenty years.
You hit it, you can run and get around bases, it's all run.
Is there any more, any more questions for us?
The old Hall of Fame.
Sorry, I'm sorry. We got some drawing to do, and so.
Sure might make this thing.
I don't even. Hopefully, you know, ten days or so, um, we'll have a couple of concepts that I can look at.
Maybe that March first.
Hopefully, uh, give a thumbs up to and then we'll start, get that worked and then we'll see you again at, at the March meeting.
So, it's good. And by then you'll tell us how much land, what does that come in?
I think before the. Once we get layouts that work.
And then we do some, some, some grading work on it. Yes.
Yeah, we're talking about ten, fourteen acres, do what they're talking about.
He said last thing, probably could be last.
Let's, let's just get the grading first.
Yeah, let's see how.
Let's, let's, let's just get the grading first.
Well, this sounds good.
Well, thank y'all for your time, all right?
Thank you all for coming back.
As a start.
I do too.
Anybody else have any other questions, thoughts, or big ideas?
If we link the press box, I'll say it's sound.